Welcome to Local Listens.
Welcome to Local Listens.
You're listening to Local Listens.
You're listening to Local Listens.
Local Listen.
Welcome to Local Listens.
Welcome to Local Listens.
Welcome to Local Listens.
Local Listen.
Okay, my friends, welcome, welcome and Happy Mother's Day. I am so excited to introduce to you Lizbeth Diaz from Dallas, Texas. And it's a place that I do respect quite a lot. And we're going to talk all about Texas today, particularly the Dallas County area. And I'm really excited because Lizbeth was one of the first people that I chatted with on my Instagram when I first created the at Local Listens page. So she's been really kind, showed me a lot of support and positivity and encouragement, which I appreciate and I will remember forever. So Lizbeth was born and raised in Dallas. Hello. She studied at the Christ for the Nations Institute and graduated from Dallas Baptist University in Dallas, Texas, with a degree in political science, which is something we're going to discuss quite a lot today. She has been involved in her local community, helping others run for office and getting people involved in the political field. In fact, yesterday I saw Lizbeth was at the polls in Dallas. That's really badass. Glad you've been helping out the community and getting them involved and raising awareness. And lastly, Lizbeth ran for Congress in Texas and she is an advocate for change in Texas. All things we're going to dive into today. In fact, Lizbeth is running again this year, right? Or next year?
Next year, yes, for my local community.
Very exciting. So Lizbeth, welcome. How are you today?
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me Jake on your show. It is an honor to have young people that care about what's going on in their states and in the nation in general. Because now more than ever, we need leaders, we need leadership. So thank you for having me and it is an honor.
Agreed and thank you. It's an absolute pleasure. It's so cool because I didn't realize that Texas was going to be a place that I wanted to move to. And then now Dallas is on my radar. I'm planning to move there July 1st when my lease is up here in Connecticut. So it'd be really cool to connect with a local and especially someone who's in so involved in the community and trying to help make positive changes. So although I'm, you know, I'm 27, I'm fairly young, but I'm more concerned for, you know, purposes that I'm sure we can agree with that. The younger, younger generations like the 15, 16, 17 year olds who are getting ready to be able to vote in a couple of years. Hopefully they've been learning quite a lot in these last couple of years. But speaking of learning and speaking of finding the truth, the ritual first question on this podcast for you, Lizbeth is, when did you begin to speak your truth?
Great question, Jake. So when I was nine, I started going to a church in my community. And from there, it just started opening up my understanding of the reality of the truth. You know, the moral truth, the values, just started to be instilled in me that the world needs to know the truth. So after I was like 12, I just started telling people about God and their purpose in school. So I guess I started at a really young age and now I'm 34. And I feel, I still feel the same way, you know, that we need to, to, to tell the truth, you know, to a world that needs it right now, more than ever, because we're starting to see more and more chaos in the world.
Right.
We see it in the news and in our country, there's more division, more hate, more than ever. So we need to speak out the truth. So it's not easy. It's not easy, but yeah.
Love that. That's such a cool answer, Lizbeth, and I really appreciate what you've been doing to spread truth in your local community. And I want to ask you this because when you, when we talk about the importance of speaking your truth or telling the truth, just trying to be honest as best as you can, it reminds me of a phrase that I picked up while I was working as a high school student, early college days. Telling the truth is quote, para el bien del todos. And it's for the good of all. And I'm curious, was your, was your concern about the chaos in the world or in Texas and Dallas, wherever? Was it apparent before COVID, before 2020, like, or was it recently? Like, when did you start to become concerned about the politics and the religious aspect of our existence? I know you said you were in church when you were younger, but when did you start to actually grow concerned enough to the point where you wanted to get involved in the community?
Well, I went to Christ for the Nations and there I was placing in my heart to be involved in government. For some reason, I started working with a lady that was helping immigrants become US citizens. So I started by teaching citizenship classes in my local community and telling people what it is to become an American citizen and what are the requirements and the rights responsibilities of being a US citizen. And then them part to participate in the elections by registering to vote after they become a citizen and voting. Because it's important that we vote and make a difference in our, and know that we can make a difference in our government. So this was after high school that I started working with this lady. She gave me the opportunity to teach US citizenship classes to a group of about 30 adults. And all of them would pass their citizenship exams before an immigration official when they, when they had to go to their interview. So I think that I started discovering that I was given a, a talent. So it was the teaching, teaching of government and, and letting people know what is our history, what is our government life? And then people started just asking me about how to become a citizen and how they can vote. And I guess that just came like through the, the, the work experience that I was able to have there with the lady.
Yeah, that is so beautiful that you had direct impact on people's lives. I mean, people who were actively trying to become citizens and you helped them pass that exam. And I'm curious, I want to ask you about the, the process and I'm wondering if the process to gain citizenship has changed quite a lot. And I know you're up in Dallas, pretty far north, but you know, the southern border in Texas is a hot button issue. And I think I'm assuming I'm, I am certainly aware of my own limitations because I don't know it all and I probably never will. But that's why we're having this chat today and hopefully we can teach people a couple of things that they didn't know either. So let's start with a couple of questions. You can answer them however you see fit and what, whichever order you want. So one would be, what is the process like to gain citizenship now? Or has it changed a lot since you started? And what do you think most people misunderstand about the immigration process? Like, what are some of the, probably like if, if you wanted to let people know something about that whole process, you know, what, what should they understand from, from your perspective?
Okay, so here in America, we have people from all over the countries that come here. They either come here with a visa and then they want to marry somebody that is a US citizen. Or they have family that is a resident or a citizen and they want to become a citizen. So through their family member, they can actually apply to become a resident first. And then after several years, they qualify to become a US citizen if they pass the interview at the immigration interview. So first they have to go through the process and enter legally, of course.
Right.
If they, if they decide, somebody decides to enter illegally, there's going to be consequences at the time of them applying for a green card, their residence or citizenship.
Okay, so I, I want to ask this, you know, for people who don't, who don't really understand, when you're taking the citizenship exam and you're doing the interview, what kinds of things do people need to become qualified? Or to, to pass this, this interview, like what kinds of questions are in the interview? Or like what kinds of details can you share about the whole process?
Yeah, so they would have to be a resident for at least three or five years. And they have to be at least, they can be a child as well if their parents are citizens and they were minors at the time that they were here in the US, they can apply for their citizenship certificate. But there are certain qualifications that, that can apply to people that have applied to citizenship. They will have to pass an exam. They would have to pass an exam. And this exam consists of about 10 questions out of 100 questions that they will have to study. These questions are US citizen, US government and history questions. So they, they would need to learn the government, how, how our government works and our history as well. So they will have, they will be given these questions, take classes at their library or wherever they have these citizenship classes.
All right, excellent. So when you're thinking about this issue and your role and can you remind people, you know, what position are you running for? Where are you running? And, uh, you know, if people want to reach out to you to learn more about your campaign, how can they contact you, Lizbeth?
So if people would like to know more about my campaign, they can follow me on Instagram at Liz underscore Diaz 2022. And I still have a lot to, to learn and grow about our politics. But I'm trying my best, you know, to make a difference and a change in our community. But they can email me at lisbethadiaz@yahoo.com or they can call me at 469-509-3629. I can answer any questions you have and I would like to run for city council here in Dallas next year in 2023. So I have to prepare myself for that.
Excellent. And what was your experience like running the previous year? And, you know, what have you learned from your first campaign? And how's it going so far in the planning process of getting ready for next year's election?
Wow, well, definitely it takes time to run a campaign. So I wish I should have started earlier because I was campaigning for three months only. So I should have, I should have started a year or two years ago when I felt that like, there was like, um, you know, like whenever you, you have like a calling to do something, you have that in your heart. But you know, it was either distractions maybe, but a lot of things going on during COVID. But I should have started during that time, but I started campaigning back in December. And that's when I announced that I was running for Congress in District 30.
Nice.
But I should have started like when COVID started, you know, because that's when people needed more answers to them. But even now people need answers to a lot of things that are going on.
Yeah. So I know we were just talking about the immigration issue and I, you know, we should definitely circle back to it. And yeah, as a way of asking you a more general question and you can answer it with however you want, obviously. But when you think about COVID and you think about the 2020 chaos, how has it changed people's understanding of politics? Or what do you think, what kind of impact has these last two years made on what politics mean to the average ordinary person?
Well, now I think people, a lot of people are waking up to the reality that we, everyone is, you know, nobody has all the answers. So a lot of people were looking towards clear answers from politicians, from our president.
Right.
But they were not able to give them the right answers. So now we see that our government and people in general are human beings. So nobody is perfect, you know, but we do need to rely more on God to give us that, that answer that, that we need.
Amen to that.
Not in a human, human person.
Right, yeah. The answers we seek are sometimes beyond human understanding or, you know, they don't come from us necessarily, but we can definitely receive them if we listen. And I'm curious, because you're in Texas and because you're, you're there in the state that has been dealing with this issue so frequently. And I know, uh, you know, we can talk about Governor Abbott and what's been going on with him. But we should also talk about the current president or some people refer to him as the resident of the White House.
Okay, yes.
There's a, there's an issue about open borders and you know, I'm, I'm not choosing a particular side for this conversation. I'm just asking you to give you a platform to share for people. So, you know, who knows, someone from Dallas, Texas might be listening and they're like, well, if Lizbeth is elected to city council, then what would be her stance or her take? So I want to give you the opportunity to speak more about your views on firstly, this immigration issue.
Yes. Well, my, my views on the immigration issue that we've had in Texas is that our governor in Texas is not taking the, the main lead right now in Texas as he needs to be more, he, he needs to enforce the law more here in Texas. So because we see that there's a lot of children coming in illegally without their parents. So they need to let, you know, there needs to be some kind of, of border and more secure. I personally feel really, really sad for that situation. Because it's young people is children, women that are dying in the border. So because they're trying to swim over here.
Right.
So I think there needs to be more security and, and more, I guess, people need us, need, need to stand up to what's going on. And we know that Biden is not doing anything or Ms. Ms. Kamala Harris is not doing anything. She is going to the Ukraine and looking at their border. And she's not looking at what's going on in the US border. So we cannot, we need to have leadership. So I think there's not the right leadership right now. So.
Amen to that. And earlier I had asked you, what do you think most people misunderstand? So let's, let's take a second and imagine that we do support Biden. I think clearly we don't, uh, clearly we see the issue with what they're doing and the ideology that they're spreading around to younger people especially. So why, why do you think so many people are, you know, they, they don't understand your point of view? Like, how, how could you reach out to those people who disagree with you or people who don't understand what's really happening down there?
So what I would, how I would speak to the young people about this situation. We have to have the real statistics that is, that are going on so that the young people can get involved and see firsthand what the numbers, how many people are dying at the border every day? So how many people are they, are being trafficked over here illegally?
Right.
And how much drugs are being brought into the US? And how many young people are dying from drugs? So that's a big issue for the US people. They are the ones dying from drugs. So it's sad.
It is sad. It is sad. And.
And they want to focus on other issues. They want to focus on the LGBT issues.
Right.
You know, there's great issues. There's people dying. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's upsetting. And you know, you brought up Ukraine. Like there's a lot of focus on other countries and other borders and other issues. And you know, where is the leadership in our own nation? And I, I want to ask you this because I think it's great to criticize and to, you know, to think critically about our leadership. So let's, let's talk about this for a second because I know, uh, you know, I'm someone who's planning to move to Dallas. And this is just ironic that we happen to meet, uh, but.
I know.
I was looking at a U-Haul image on their, one of their social media pages and it said that the two states that are receiving the most transplants right now, can you guess those two states? I'm, I'm sure you can guess.
California.
Oh no, sorry. Like not where people are leaving from, but where they're going.
Where people are going right now?
Yeah.
Texas.
Yep.
And Florida.
Number two is Florida, Texas and Florida. Now they happen to have governors that are very controversial. So like we have Ron DeSantis in Florida and we have Governor Abbott in Texas. Why, why do you think there's such controversial figures and what, what do you think is really going on there?
Well, they're trying to change the, the state. They're trying to make it more Democrat. And they're trying to say that Texas is going to become blue now. We need to make Texas blue instead of red. But we know that Texas has always, most of the time has always been red. So we need to keep it red. So as I always say, do not California my Texas.
Right. Don't Fauci my Florida. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, just to be clear, is it Governor Abbott who's, you know, pursuing this, you know, make Texas blue campaign? Or are you referring to other people?
Well, definitely Governor Abbott has given the room for these Democrats to do whatever they want to do in the legislature. So he needs to enforce that this is a conservative state. You know, we're not going to have all these liberals do whatever they want with Texas and the border. They're not even focusing on the real issue. So we need to enforce that Texas is a red state. So, yeah.
Yeah. Now, speaking of red and blue, um, did you grow up in a conservative family? Cause I, I just want to share really quick, you know, I, I have a very conservative father and a very liberal mother. So like I've been pulled in two different directions my whole life and it was never really clear, you know, where to go and what to do. So I eventually was able to like think for myself and figure it out. But was it the same for yourself or did you have, you know, a conservative family?
Well, I've always had all kinds of, of family members. We've all been with different points of views, like some are liberal, some are conservative. But as I got older, like you said, is you make your own decisions, right? You have your own way of viewing things and your standards. So it just depends on the standards that you put yourself. So I guess these are, these are the standards that I think that, that I have placed on myself. And I, I would like other people to know that the better standards that you have for yourself, the world's going to be better. So the higher standards that you have, it's going to be better for yourself and want, you know, growing up. We don't want them to have low standards on themselves. So that's the problem right now that we have.
Well said, well said. It doesn't really matter what kind of family you come from, whether they lean this way or that way. It's really about the, the values and the standards that you place on yourself. And like you said, it's a really great point, Lizbeth, that if we raise our standards and, you know, pursue our values and make sure that we're trying to do the best that we can, then we will have a positive impact on this country. Now, I want to ask you about the campaign too, because I think a lot of people are disillusioned and they'd say, well, oh, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, we cut out a little bit.
Yeah.
No worries. Let me start over. So a lot of people probably feel disillusioned and they probably say, well, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat, like all politicians, all politics is corrupt. But you have decided to dive into the system and change it from the inside. And I really respect that because I think it's easy to bury your head in the sand and just try to like not be a part of it. But you're participating in it and you're trying to do the right thing.
Trying to get to the bottom. Yes. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's totally fine. So yeah, my, my question I was going to ask you is basically, when you started campaigning last time, what are some things that you've learned? And what are you excited to, you know, continue learning about beyond just immigration? Like what other issues are you invested in and what else do you want to do for Dallas?
Well, that is a great question, Jake. And I see that we need to focus the issue of education. The kids need to have better educations, especially in the areas where there's more disparity of income. You know, we need, we need to help those kids that grew up in this environment where there's not a lot of resources. So we need better education, quality education at the school. Are the kids learning? And we need a better, the, the educational system and what are they learning? So I think we need to look into the schools and the teachers as well. I know there's a lot of demands that are being placed on the teachers, but I would also like that our teachers will have a higher salaries. Because I think they're not being paid enough, I think.
That is a great start. And I myself am a high school teacher and I often tell people when they ask me about it, I say, well, I typically spend more time with these kids than their, than their parents do. And wow, yeah, it's kind of sad, but I do want to ask you this because, yeah, maybe if, you know, if teachers are paid more, that would be good. But we should also focus on like the curriculum and you know, what, what is being taught? And I've personally witnessed a lot of changes from when I graduated back in 2013 to now, you know, I'm teaching. And I'm curious what you think about some of the issues that have been going on in the education system? And if you want to get more specific about, you know, I, I think everyone would agree that paying teachers more would be a great idea. And, um, but let's also talk about like what's happening in the classroom. What are some of the values that you want to stress there?
Well, definitely, you know, we see right now the, the situations that are going on at the school board level, you know, and at the local communities where now the teachers or the school board is saying that parents cannot have a say in their child's gender. You know, that parents are not bright enough to decide their child's gender. That is not true. You know, we should leave these, um, these issues towards the family, the parents, right? And not bring that into the school. We need, I think we need to focus on the basics of math, science, technology and reading and, and teach the kids the basics, like, you know, those are the real, real things we need to teach the kids.
Agreed, agreed. I, I happen to be an English teacher and you know, sometimes I'm like, man, if I was a math teacher or a science teacher, I would make much, a much bigger impact. But the truth is that we have to just think about what could be useful for these kids. And if I'm teaching them how to read and write and think critically, that's definitely a good step. But let's talk about that gender issue for a second because that's very strange to think about. I never received any kind of training on gender dysphoria or anything like that. If a student ever came to me and was confused about their gender, you know what I would do? I would refer them to their parents. I'd be like, this is an issue between you and your family or you and your psychologist or someone like that. But it wasn't ever my job description to handle these kinds of things. So why do you think teachers have become so politicized in this, in this time? It seems like it wasn't always like this, you know?
Yes, it has become an issue all over. Like in, in sports, we see it all over the place where they started with the protests of Black Lives Matter. They started to divide. They started to want to divide. It's all become a political thing, right? So now it's affecting teachers. It affected during COVID, it affected the nurses, the doctors, you know, everyone with the mask mandates.
Right.
So now we see that this has become a political issue in the classrooms. So about teachers, um, get, uh, they are the ones now, um, taking the, I guess. taking the, I guess, the burden, you know, taking the burden for these political issues that they shouldn't have to be taking this burden.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. Well, I'm very excited for people to uh, you know, learn more about your, your campaign.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
It cuts off.
Yeah, it cuts off. So yeah, thank God we can edit. Um, so uh, another question, another topic is, well, one of the reasons why I'm so attracted to, to Dallas and to, to Texas in particular is that there wasn't much of a push for a mandate and the mask mandate had ended much sooner than the mandates ended in Connecticut. And I always thought that that was awesome because we uh, kinda figured out pretty early on that the, the masks weren't doing much and it was kind of like crazy to keep on doing it, even though we were pretending that they were working. But in Connecticut, they just kept on going as if it was totally normal. They didn't pay attention to the data, like you said, and the data is so crucial. Now, I'm, I'm curious, in 2020 and in 2021, were you involved at all with those uh, board meetings? Like, were you campaigning about the mandates, whether that was the, the jab or the masks? Like, what was your experience with that?
Definitely. I was campaigning against the vaccine mandates and against the masks. So um, a lot of people were mad, were upset because we were campaigning against the vaccines. But now we're looking at the results, uh, you know, and we see that people um, that did take the vaccines, they're gonna have to take a booster and then I don't know how many other boosters, but the people that did not take the vaccines, they're doing fine because they have immune support. So and, and it is, it is already, the doctors have already said, we have, we have immune support. So once your body starts gaining um, immunity towards the disease. So it does not affect you, affect you like on the third or fourth time. So.
Yeah, it's very interesting and I'm sure you probably saw that video of Fauci himself going around where he was talking on an interview way before COVID and talking about how natural immunity was the best vaccine available. It's just very ironic to see that come out at such a time, you know?
Now, yeah.
Yeah. Well, beyond COVID, beyond the issues we discussed earlier, like immigration and the masks and all that, what are the other pressing issues in Dallas that you want to address in the city council?
Some pressing issues in our community in Dallas. Uh, we, we are gonna have to see how our community is doing and if these city council members that are in the position now are actually doing what they said they were doing, they were gonna do. So that's my first step is I have to really see, you know, the council, the current council member has been there for years. Has there been any change, positive change in the community? Uh, since she became a council, councilwoman, we need to hold these people accountable, you know? So uh, these people, they say they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but we see the same results. So we need to see change and we need to see if the, the community has better businesses or did the education, did the schools improve? And how are the, the people doing? Do they have more jobs?
Hmm.
You know, uh, we need to really look into what's going on in the community. So that's at the local level. So.
Well said. Yeah, there's two interesting points there. One, it doesn't really matter how, like if someone has been office for say 10, 15 years, it's like, that's great, but it's not about how long they've been there, but like what positive change have they brought out? So I love that you're saying this, that we should hold the leaders accountable and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do and uh, you know, push them to, to do better or to you know, to get rid of them if they're not doing what they're supposed to do. And so it's very interesting. Um, the other point that you've made was, well, there are a lot of economic strains on people since COVID and small business owners are probably concerned. There was a point where uh, rent and you know, getting evicted was a big deal. And I think a lot of small businesses have gone under un, un, unfortunately because of what is, what has happened. But do you see the future of Dallas? Um, you know, since COVID is seems to be winding down, do you see things really going back to normal? Like what have you noticed economically in the city of Dallas?
Well, economically in our city, I think that they're creating more like townhomes. They're creating more apartments.
Hmm.
So these people uh, need to either lower the property taxes of the houses or create more housing, you know, more houses for people. Um, or um, more townhomes, I think. I think people want to be homeowners and be able to have uh, some kind of um, I guess eh, eh, equity, right? So for their future. So I think we need to focus on that for people. So.
Awesome.
Because if not, it's gonna create more and more people that are renting and then um, people that take advantage of these renters too.
Hmm. Yeah, that would be uh, terrible to move in and you know, you have a set rent price and then you agree to that. You sign a year-long lease and then all of a sudden you're having to pay double or triple or whatever it is and
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Are you, yeah, like, do you think that we should have um, more houses or, or more apartments? Like?
Well, that's a very interesting question. And for me, you know, I'm, I don't have a lot of money saved up. I know I'm, I'm in debt from, from college. So like for me, moving to Dallas, like the apartments are very attractive because they have lower rent. Um, but my goal ultimately is to own my own home one day. So I guess like the question would be like, if we build the apartments in Dallas or if there's more homes, like how does that affect people at all levels? Cause I, I think it's pretty obvious that the people who are already pretty wealthy don't have much to worry about, but
Yeah.
People in the lower socioeconomic levels that are the most impacted. So what do you think about it?
Well, yeah, I mean, apartments do help, you know, people that are having uh, lower um, lower income. So we will, I mean, it's good, but um, in the long run, people eventually want to own, would, it would be better for people to own their own homes.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
And I guess it's cool that you brought up, you know, if teachers are paid more and a higher salary, then more than will become homeowners. So I mean, that's there's a positive there for sure.
That's one thing we can uh, advocate for definitely.
Yeah. Well, are there any other issues that we haven't already brought up? Cause we've already talked about immigration. We've talked about the COVID mandates and we spoke a, a little bit about, you know, this, this push to uh, make Texas liberal and we talked a bit about housing. Uh, what else do you think is important for people to remember when they uh, choose who to vote for on the city council race?
That is a great question and people need to know and remember that if, if they're not, if you don't see the person in the community eh, out in the events or motivating others or telling people, getting out um, information, health information right now after, during and after COVID, you don't see them, then you need to remember that these people, they are not really doing what, you know, they're not serving the community. They're just there for a name. So these people have to be out there in the community uh, talking to people and, and you have to know who they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well said. It's like if I were to uh, vote for someone, you know, if I had like a neighbor, for example, and I was like, oh, I know that, that person. I speak to them. I see them at the grocery store, like we, we chat, like our, our kids are friends, you know, something like that, that definitely appeals. And I'm curious, I saw you on Instagram and you were posting yesterday about being out at the polls, which is really cool that you've been getting involved and you know, you're, you're practicing what you're uh, preaching, Lizbeth. So what has that been like for you? Like, do you want to tell us what your experience was like yesterday at the uh, polls?
Yes, well, thank you. And I think people are like, people nowadays are like, oh, that's boring, you know, or, or she's, she's uh, just um, doing her charity work, but I think that we have to show people these examples on whether it's on TV, social media, wherever, so that people can get involved and do something as well in their communities. So especially our young, young people, they do want to get involved, but they don't know how maybe, or they haven't, uh, nobody has told them like, you know, you can go register voters or greet people at the polls and get involved.
Okay. Awesome, awesome. So this next question is for anyone who's in Dallas, uh, you know, anyone living in Dallas, Texas. Could you let them know, are there any um, events coming up or is there anything happening this summer that you want to share that people should get involved with?
Well, yes. Um, I'm going to be posting future events on my Instagram. That is a great question. And there's also uh, called, something called the Libre Initiative that's gonna happen this summer where we, we can actually take the ca- high school students to the colleges so that they can um, get a tour of the colleges in Dallas and so that the high school students can um, can be interested in college. So that's one thing that's gonna happen in this summer.
Awesome. So that Libre, uh, can you uh, you know, let people know how they can get in contact with that or that organization?
Of course. So on Instagram, you can go to Libre Initiative and that they have all the information there as well.
Excellent, excellent. Libre, L-I-B-R-E, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, uh, I also want to ask you about uh, popular character in Dallas, Texas by the name of Alex Stein, Primetime99. Uh, if you guys live in Dallas, you probably know him. And if you just watch the news, you'll see Alex Stein out there causing chaos, doing his absolute best to get people's attention on various issues. Uh, just for one particular example, he dressed up as a swimmer and was talking, oh, he identifies as a woman and he's done all sorts of crazy stuff, but I totally respect him. And I'm curious, well, you know, you live in Dallas, you're, you're here where this is happening. I mean, what is your take on what's going on with Alex Stein and what do you want to say about it?
And, and he has been doing these uh, videos on uh, he's basically waking people up with his videos and bringing awareness of what's going on in politics and how the left has gone uh, so um, out of control with their policies. So um, right now comedy is, is according to Alex Stein is dead. So we need more comedy in politics and people need to learn how to laugh and I agree with him. So yeah, so if you guys want to follow my friend on uh, Instagram as well.
Yeah, it should be pretty easy to find him these days. Uh, I know before this, he was doing a lot on the Conspiracy Castle podcast and uh, Alex, you know, I've, no, I've never really met you and I hope that, you know, we can both meet Alex someday. But I just want to give him a quick shout out that I love what he's, love what he's doing. It takes a lot of balls to do what he does and it's really cool. He's uh, you know, he's got a lot of people's attention on certain issues. So it's
Yes.
Can definitely respect that.
Right. Yes, yes.
So earlier before we started recording this episode, you know, we're gonna wrap up soon and before we start to wrap up, I'm curious because this was a nice surprise. Um, I was talking to you about how I spent Mother's Day. Uh, for anyone listening who uh, you know, is, it's probably gonna release this episode way after Mother's Day, but you know, on this Sunday, my mother is not here, my stepmother is not here, they're both on vacation. So I was in, I was invited to go spend the, the day at church and I went and I'm glad that I went. Uh, I'm not like a very Christian person. I was never baptized or anything like that, but I do recognize the power of God and a higher power and it's unbelievable how much the community within those churches or whoever it is, a mosque, a temple can really benefit people during a chaotic time. So when we were chatting earlier, Lizbeth, uh, you said you were printing something out and I was like, oh, what are you printing? So um, would you like to share with us, what did you print out earlier? And you know, you know, can you tell us a little bit about why you decided to share this message with us?
Thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you, Jake. And I was um, focusing on a passage of the Bible that is in um, the Bible in Psalms and it says that, this is one of my favorite verses and a reason why I'm involved in politics. People ask me all the time, why are you involved in politics? Like what is your motivation behind it?
Hmm.
So this verse is, it's everything, why I'm involved. And it says, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And, and if our nation uh, remembers who God is and that he is all-powerful, all-sovereign, you know, he can do anything he wants. If our nation focuses on, you know, his power, his sovereignty, then God promises that in the nation's gonna be a blessed nation. So that is the problem we have. Our nation has um, turned its back on God and on his promise. That is the reason why I'm, I'm involved with politics.
I love that, Lizbeth. It's very honorable that you can stand here and share your message with confidence and conviction. And I, I respect that quite a lot and I want to say that I feel absolutely blessed that you were willing to speak with me on the Local Listens Podcast. And as we wrap up, this is a moment for you. You're very welcome, Lizbeth. This is a moment for you to reflect. The last question, uh, the ritual last question for everyone is if you could think back to your past self, so that could have been you last week or last month or last year, however far back you want to go. If you could give your past self some kind of message or some kind of advice and word of wisdom, what would you say to your past self?
To my past self, I would tell her that she would not fear anything.
Hmm.
Don't fear anything or anyone.
I love that. And I'm sure she would be very proud of what you've done. And I'm very excited for you, Lizbeth. I want to give you a thousand thanks for being here and please remind everyone one more time, um, where can they find you? How can they learn more about your campaign?
About my campaign, you can go to my Instagram, Liz underscore Diaz2022 and as well email me, lisbethadiaz@yahoo.com or call me four six nine five zero nine thirty six twenty nine.
Awesome. You are a true rock star, Lizbeth. I am very excited to come and meet you in Dallas sometime in the near future. And I want to wish you a happy Sunday, happy Mother's Day to your family and please
Thank you.
You're welcome back anytime. I would love to continue talking about some other issues some other time.
Yes, definitely. And uh, where are you from? Where are you uh, at right now?
Yeah, I'm currently in Connecticut.
Connecticut.
By the time this episode releases, I will have put in my uh, resignation notice at the high school that I currently work at. Um, but I've turned in all of my, my paperwork for the Texas Board of Education. I've given my fingerprints, so I'm all ready to find a new job, but I'm also open to
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm hoping to find an apartment in Dallas or you know, save for a home one day like we, like we talked about. But I'm also open to leaving the education system and trying to pursue something else. Not necessarily gonna be a full-time podcaster, but I want to do something that can make a difference. So perhaps we can work together sometime, but.
Of course. You can call me anytime and let me know anything, you know, if you need any ideas or anything, I'm here for you as well. So thank you so much, Jake.
Thank you, my friend. It was wonderful connecting with you today. And like I said earlier, I'm looking forward to doing this again sometime. So cheers.
Yes.
Have a great night and I will talk to you soon.
You too, Jake.
Hey there, my friends. Thank you for being here on the Out Trail to episode eighteen of the Local Listens Podcast. And today I was joined by Lizbeth Diaz. She was a wonderful, wonderful guest. Very excited for her campaign coming up, uh, City Very excited for her campaign coming up, uh, City Council of Dallas County. It's Dallas, Texas, y'all. And I don't know if I've told you guys, you've probably heard around the telegrams. Maybe you've heard me mention it on the podcast, but I am moving to Dallas, Texas. And I was not intending to go out and meet politicians, people running for city councils such as Lizbeth. And I'm so happy that I have been connected with Lizbeth, because, well, it's really cool to be involved with the community. I have not really been involved in my local politics here in Connecticut. So very happy I got to connect with Lizbeth. She was wonderful. What a cool episode. So it was great to hear her story, her connection to God, as well as all the other ideas and plans that she has to make Dallas a better place. And one thing I did notice when I visited Texas, I was in Dallas for the Easter spring break. And I was looking around, I was like, wow, it's pretty clean around here. I'm used to Danbury, Connecticut, Waterbury, Connecticut, where there's just trash everywhere. And I mean, like literally, there's litter everywhere. But in Dallas, it was clean. It seemed as if, now call me crazy, but it seemed like people in Dallas actually cared about their city. They had a sense of pride about where, where they were from. So as a New Englander transplanting into Texas, I hope to carry with me that same pride. But also I have a lot to learn about Texas culture and it's gonna be interesting. But speaking with Lizbeth was a real pleasure. Definitely gonna have to connect with her when I get to Dallas. And really glad she was able to share. Not only do I agree with her views and not only do I support her entire campaign, but I had a lot of fun speaking with her. And I really appreciate everyone on Instagram, Twitter, Telegram, Facebook, wherever you are, YouTube. Thank you guys for reaching out to me, because some of these episodes, you know, we're on episode eighteen right now. They are literally just because people reached out to me, they're like, hey, what's up? Do you want to do a, a show together? And I'm like, yeah, great, let's do it. And here we are. So Lizbeth, thank you so much for being so kind on social media. And now we finally bridged that gap and we've had a real, quote unquote, real conversation. So anyone else looking to create an episode with me, all you gotta do is reach out. You guys know where to find me. Either way, though, Lizbeth is a wonderful, wonderful lady and I think she's gonna do a great job on the city council of Dallas. So without further ado, let me wrap up this episode number eighteen with our closing remarks. Wherever you are, be here, be now, and be you.